Call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, July 10th, 2023. I'll report the attendance that Member Brunel and Member Richardson are excused. All others are here and accounted for. At this time, I would ask everybody to stand in place of the flag, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, really like in the United States, and to re-vote, which stands one nation under heaven indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Article Three, to approve the current agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by, is that Rissy? Or was that?
Member Engel moved, and I'll support him.
Alright, and supported by Member Rissy. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. Article Four, does any member have a conflict of interest that they would like to disclose?
Nothing new.
Hearing none, we'll move on. Article Five, approve the minutes from the June 19th, 2023 Marathon Meeting.
I have two objection characterization, but it was in fact a long meeting.
You weren't even so I, first of all, I note that the Vice Chair Moxley called the meeting to order seven and not the Chair who was not present. So that's just a typo in Article One that needs to be fixed, Brian. You see that?
Yep. Think Madison does it, no?
Yep.
Maddie doesn't?
Okay, you need to fix that, yeah.
Yep.
And then fast forward, please, to
Need a binder with tabs for these minutes.
Was the Article 11, the Wormy's case, would be the third page of that where I asked about what type of initial input was being used. And I recall specifically asking whether there are any meat byproducts that were utilized as input, and Mr. Chen replied that there were not. I want to make sure that's part of the record.
Alright. Any other amendments, additions, corrections? Alright, hearing none, and was supported by Member Rissy. All those who support with the the motion was made by Member Engel to make corrections, right? Did we not have a motion?
We don't have a motion yet.
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes with those two changes.
I'll go ahead and support it, just to go along with your
Engel makes the motion, Member Rissy supports it with those additions. All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, no objections, we'll move on. Let's go to Article Six, accept the meetings from the AC Airport Committee. Commerce District Zoning Review Subcommittee. For those who are members of that, I think it's just Ralph and Scott now, and is Joe in that?
That's correct, Joe is also. So it'd be great if the motion came from a non-member of the committee, probably.
So, Timmy or Alan, you can make the motion to accept those minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay. Member Roland makes a motion to
Support.
And supported by Trustee Nordhug. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll move forward. At this time, we will acknowledge any visitors that are wishing to speak. If you're here about, we have a couple of public hearings. If you're here about the Sugar Creek Address or the Alaska Ridge Hearing, we'll have a public hearing. I'd ask that you defer to that. But for any other comment, feel free to step forward to the podium. And Madison, do we have anybody on Zoom? Alright. Excellent. Hearing none, let's move on to Article Eight, Case Number 23-3774, Demester. You're multitasking tonight.
Alright, just a quick note, it's Thomas Demester, not Neil Demester, so that's a typo on the front of the staff report. But Thomas Demester is here this evening pursuing a special land use permit for an accessory building over our 832 square foot standard. He's at 2511 Sugar Creek Lane, which is kind of our northeastern boundary area of the township. And it's the ARC District. He is looking to build a 1,014 square foot building that measures at 39 feet by 26 feet with a height to the midpoint of the garage being indicated as 12 feet. The placement meets all set back standards required. The well and septic plans that I did find from the house plans don't show it interfering. But the applicant could clarify if the exact placement is to avoid the well. The, the map is included in the packet if you need to see that. The accessory buildings typically approved in this area from our inventory of accessory buildings comes in around 2,000 square feet, so this would be under that average size that we approve. He also has 11.8 acres, so he is approved to have three accessory buildings, and this would be his first accessory building on the property. It's indicated to be used for personal storage with a post and beam construction. The architect he's working with is designing it in the style of the home, so it would fit the character. The building would be less than half of the home size, and because of the acreage, I don't see it being an issue of lot coverage. I did not see a proposed new drive for access. He has an existing driveway that comes up Sugar Creek, and they'll be expanding off that same pad for the drive. With all this in consideration, with those factors, because it's not visible from the road, the parcel is so large. We didn't see any negative impacts on adjoining properties. And with all of that in consideration, I recommended that you guys approve this with our conditions that it's not used to run a business or to be a living space, and that their outdoor lighting adheres to our township standards, and the applicant has agreed to that. I have not received any comments in support or the latter.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions?
I can put the plans out there, too.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward? Again, if you could state your name for the record, we record the minutes.
Thomas Demester, 2511 Sugar Creek Lane, Southeast. Yeah, I think Madison's comments were accurate. We certainly agree to the conditions on that, and, but I'm glad to answer any questions if there are any at all.
You're not doing a new driveway, it's going to tap into the existing driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
So Sugar Creek Lane is a private roadway. We split our property into three resulting lots. And then we have a gravel drive that goes off from Sugar Creek Lane that supports our house, and it's the same access point.
Okay. Okay, we may call you back if we have a question in the public hearing. Beautiful building.
It's a nice, nice place.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I would make a motion to go to a public hearing at this time.
Motion made by Member Rissy, supported by
Support.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we are holding a public hearing. If anybody would like to come forward and make any comments that relate to this matter. And I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom. Besides the members up here.
With that, I would make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Support. Heard it from Member Rissy and supported by Member Engel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. Any comments? They want to take a crack at?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Case Number 23-3774, Demester, 2511 Sugar Creek. I recommend approval of the Type One Special Use Permit for an accessory building exceeding 18 or 832 square feet with the following conditions, that the accessory building is not used to run a business or for living space, and any outdoor lighting adheres to Cascade Township ordinance standards.
Support. Member, or Member Rissy made the motion, Member Engel supported it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, supported. Thank you so much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome to stick around, but you don't have to.
Thank you for the complete package.
It's a, it's a very good looking bu- building.
Yeah. Madison, the septic plan was nice, too.
Yes.
That was
I didn't have any questions. Now I may have to come up with a new thing to go after.
Let's move on to Article Nine, Case 23-3775, Banderveen.
Alright, here the applicant is requesting rezone two parcels located at 7540 and 7550 Alaska Ridge totaling a little over 10 acres in size to rezone from a PUD to the underlying R1 zoning. So they're making their request because they would like to add a third parcel, but the language in the PUD limits the total number of parcels to two. The property is rezoned to PUD in 1995. At that time, there's only one parcel, and the property owner was looking to add a second, but there were no splits available. So as a result, the PUD was created to allow for two site condominiums. It is, I think, helpful to know that the Michigan Land Division Act was amended in 1997, and as part of that amendment, the number of splits available for all parcels was essentially reset. So if the applicant had, you know, happened to apply two years later in 997, they would have been able to do so then with additional splits available to them. If the property, the property were to be rezoned to R1, the condominium would have to be resolved, which would result in one new unplanted parcel. That new parcel will then have four divisions available, so it could be split into a total of four parcels. And then as a reminder, the minimum lot sizing in the R1 district is 40,000 square feet. Alaska Ridge is a legal non-conforming private street that does not meet the current standards of the private street ordinance. So if the rezoning is approved, and the applicant would like to split the new unplanted lot into more than two parcels, since there's two existing, they would have to either upgrade the entire street or apply for a private street exception, since it would be adding a new parcel to that street. So at that time, they then come back in front of the Planning Commission and Board for that request. So, and this is just to rezon the properties, which would go back to R1, and then depending on the number of splits they want to do after that, they may come back to this group. The master plan has a designation of rural residential for the area, which most closely relates to the ARC zoning district. However, the underlying zoning of these parcels, as well as the zoning for all parcels west of Alaska Ridge, is R1 within an area a little over 10 acres, even if the new unplanted parcel were to be split into four parcels, the density would still not be greater than the 2.3 acres allowed in the ARC zoning district. So it would not be changing the use or character of the area in that sense. So a rezoning must go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the Township Board. At this time, it appears the rezoning request is meeting the standards of Section 2305 of the zoning ordinance, which are listed in the staff report. So staff are recommending that you forward a positive recommendation to the Township Board regarding the rezoning of 7540 and 7550 Alaska Ridge from PUD to R1.
Any questions for Brian?
Yeah, I got some, and I don't know if you can answer them or the applicant can answer them, but we're going from two sections to three. The big section that we're combining, you know, cutting into two sections, are those going to be two equal sections, and if they are, what are the sizes of each section, you know?
I believe they'll be close to equal each one. I think one is maybe three and one is about three and a half, if I just remember, and the applicant can confirm that.
Okay. And do you know if they're doing houses or site condos on those?
They'd just be unplanted lots then, so just single-family homes.
Okay.
Doesn't look like, I mean, if you look at that blue outline, that does not look equal, but we'll again ask the applicant.
Yeah, I'm just, I just don't want it to be like one acre for one and four acre, you know?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Like, it does not look evenly distributed.
Okay. And then you said they're gonna, they're responsible for updating the road?
If, right, if they go from two to three, then they'd either have to upgrade the road or come back to this group to apply for a private street exception.
Okay, and then the, the development across from them, is that, that's R1?
Yeah, so all the other properties on Alaska Ridge are all zoned R1, both to the north and south. Everything west, on the west side of Alaska, have is R1. Everything on the east side of Alaska have is then ARC.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Member Rissy.
Brian, has there been any discussion regarding the easement to the river that exists in this area? As far as which parcels are able to use that easement, and if the, has there been a request for the new parcel to use that at all?
That hasn't been brought up at all. I think the applicants can speak a little bit more to that. And again, it's, right, this, it's interesting, because this is just the rezoning request for rezon the whole area to R1, which would be one parcel. If they just leave that at two, I wouldn't see an issue if then they want to add a third as part of their lot split request. I think we'd have to address that as part of that, if that third parcel would get access, or if they need to apply for a special use or whatever the requirements in
And the, and the lot split would not come in front of the Planning Commission, correct?
Not just a by right one, but if they're trying to add access to the river, or if they're applying for that private street exception, right, those aspects would. Just a normal lot split, it's just an administrative procedure.
Understood. So even if you split later, that wouldn't affect the easement access rights, would it?
Well, the section, yeah, 433 of the zoning ordinance, Scott can maybe speak a little bit to that, limits how properties that aren't physically located on the river can access the river.
So this was, this was split in 1984, but in the mid 90s, as you know, the association worked to get the, to put the keyhole ordinance in, which requires a minimum of 100 feet of frontage for each lot that is abutting the river. So I guess my concern is that just because the easement is grandfathered in, if you cut up the land that is currently easemented into smaller pieces, I don't think that necessarily well, less than 100 feet, but what, does that trigger? You know, I mean, if, if somebody comes in and something grandfathered, usually we want them to become more compliant, not less compliant, right? So I guess that's my, my concern.
We deal with that.
I want to make sure we're not poking holes in that ordinance, because there's a lot of people trying to test it on a regular basis.
I, I guess my question is, would we deal with it now when they come back to split? Because right now, they're
Perhaps when they come back to split, but we have new staff, and I want to make sure they're familiar with the process, so that's why I'm
And right, we probably have to leave, leave a council and just to get their opinion and make sure, like you said, we're, we're getting that all correct.
I just want to make sure it's handled correctly.
It could impact the decision on how they approach the split, too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Jeff? Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks.
Is the applicant present? Would you like to speak? If you could state your name for the record.
The only thing I would add is
I have your name real quick for the
Oh, sorry, Scott Banderveen at 7550 Alaska Ridge. I'd add a little bit of historical background. I'm in Unit Two, or excuse me, Unit One, and my mother-in-law's in Unit Two. She purchased the 10 acres 29 years ago. And the only way to split it into two was to do the PUD, so it's strictly for a family. And she wants to do the middle one for her, my son, her grandson, but the PUD does not allow further division beyond two. So after going through legal counsel, it was like, oh, just go back to R1, and that allowed the split. And then, of course, the adherence to private road ordinance, we'll have to consider that as well. But it's still, we call it family compound. So my mother-in-law remained in the Unit Two. She also owns a property directly to the south, that's not highlighted. So as far as having river access to the new unit, it's really not consideration, because we already have river access anyways. So any questions?
We have any questions for the applicant?
No, but that was good history. I mean, that was, I'm glad it's staying in the family, right?
Right.
And then having to develop, you guys selling it off to a developer, and who knows what goes in there?
Exactly.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Okay, I hear a motion to go to a public hearing.
Motion to go to a public hearing?
Yes, motion made by Member Engel, supported by
Support.
Member Rissy.
Oh, actually, it was a member Roland.
I'm having a tough time differentiating all of your voices. We'll have to move you around. Yeah.
I have support.
Or maybe a member Roland. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody present that would like to speak on this matter?
Yeah.
Yes, please come forward if I could have your name and address for the record.
Chuck Heckman, and I live at 7475 Alaska Ridge, so we're in that same development. And my wife, Ellen, I speak to her as well, we're supportive of this change. The only thing I'd want to put on the record, and for the Vanderveen family is I would very much like the nature of the road, Alaska Ridge, to remain the same. And what I mean is, it's very curvy, very windy, very canopy. And I look at that, and you got this straight by road, so I know that's just, it's just a picture. But anyhow, I'm concerned what the road will look like. I'm concerned what requirements might be put upon them with respect to the road. And we'd like to preserve the very beautiful nature of that road, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I get a copy of that from someone?
It'd be on the township website.
It is pretty straight. Alright, Madison, anybody on Zoom? Okay, your motion to move out?
Motion to please special hearing?
Support. I think Timmy beat me.
Did you have something, Timmy, or you just raised your hand to support? Alright, so Member Engel made a motion to move out of public hearing, and I heard who'd I hear from? Member Moxley. It's for support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed. Any, yes, Member Rissy.
Uh, maybe this is a question for Brian, but Brian, if, if you look at a, a parcel map of this area, the, to the south, there's, there appears to be about a 66-foot wide easement that runs along there. Is that is that to serve this? Well, I do know what the history of that was, if that was to serve this property or a different one, or why that's there?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, a little, and I'm not exactly clear on that. I don't know if any of the property owners want to speak to that a little bit more, actually.
That'd be great. I'm just
That is actually heated to the other Unit Three and Four, or lots Three and Four, for a drain field, so they have lift stations that pump to that area.
No, I'm, I'm referring to the, the dotted lines to the, on the south edge of that shaded area.
Below one and two on the bottom.
Goes
You want to address one?
Name or address? Yep, Drew Vanderveen. Potentially with my family moving into the, the new lot split, if the split goes through eventually. But yeah, so the, the easement to the south was originally a planned drive to serve Unit Two within the the PUD. However, when my grandmother built her house, she had decided that she would rather feel more like she was part of the community there, so the easement remains, but, but it is not in use for that purpose. Additionally, I believe because she owns the unit directly south of Unit Two, there's a lot there that the only way to access a public road is through that easement, and so that's probably why it remained intact.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
So if we if we change this, does that impact the easement and access for Unit Two?
It, it shouldn't, because the access will still come off of Alaska Ridge for one, for any new parcels, is the thought.
If there's requirements to improve the road for access, they could, in theory, come from a different direction.
Say, let's, let's change that
Right.
Alaska Avenue.
We won't be on Alaska Ridge, we'll be on
Right. I don't know whether we have to
Alaska
or even think about that.
Whatever they, yeah. Okay.
That's, that's a potential
Something they're going to need to be aware of when they come back to split. So just a consideration.
And, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm also alright, did, did either of you, as the applicant, may I ask them a question?
Of course, Chairman, okay.
Are you familiar with the easement to the river, and which parcels have access to that?
Yes. So
Can you come to the microphone, because the minutes are recorded, and I, I don't want to get yelled at for not having accurate minutes.
Has access to the river. And then the community has theoretically access in between, but it's such a steep terrain, it's really not accessible. And then she also owns, my grand, my mother-in-law owns the land that's not part of the PUD, which has access to the river.
Okay. Those have direct frontage, though, right? Her house and the one to the south.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So which ones have that 33-foot easement to the water, I guess, is that, is that
Unit Two, Unit One does not have access to
Okay. Okay.
Is that? Clarify your question.
A little bit.
So, if I, if I may, none of the other units along the river, because they don't need it, they don't have access, and then the back units seven, eight, and nine don't have rights to use the easement?
There's theoretically an easement between Unit Two and the R13, but it's just a gully. And
I, I
you could address that, as well as one of the owners, but no one really uses that, because it's pretty treacherous.
I would agree, and, yeah, I concur, I just trying to understand the
Right.
the legal side of it, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, come on forward, just, just again, thank you.
Thank you.
I need your name one more time, so we can for the minutes.
Chuck Heckman, 7475 Alaska Ridge. So what you see there in green, the easement, I live in Lot Seven. So the person who built the house on Lot Seven and Lot Eight, actually, I think he parts of all this land, but he put a dock down on the river, and we do have I think it starts out 33 feet wide easement, and then it extends to 70 or 75 feet of easement along the river. So it has been used in the past. We haven't used it just because life's busy. We do have an issue with the owner of Lot Three, they built a fence across our easement. So, and so the owners of Lot Eight and Seven have discussed this, and we haven't pursued anything with it yet. But let me ask you, you guys have experience, is it legal for them to put a fence across the easement?
Wouldn't be appropriate for us to even comment on that.
Okay, alright. What would be the steps that I would go to?
I would suggest perhaps calling Brian offline and make a conversation.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody want to take a crack at this? I can't do it, it's a chairman.
Were there any recommendations by staff on this one?
Anywhere.
I mean, conditions.
I will, I will go ahead and give it a crack here. In Case Number 233775, I would recommend that the Planning Commission support staff's recommendation for an approval of the rezoning of approximately 10.4 acres of the property in question to, from PUD to R1 Residential.
I'll support that.
Okay. Member, or motion made by Member Engel, supported by Member Rissy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Thank you so much for coming in. Move on to Case, Article 10, Case Number 233765, Redwater Group.
That's a contentious one.
Controversial ones.
So here, we just saw this recently at the June 19 meeting, but after holding that public hearing, the Planning Commission awarded preliminary approval for the proposed amendments at Watermark for an indoor cigar bar. And so we've written the PUD amendment to reflect that, which is included in the packet there. And again, this is very, a really simple text amendment. We're just adding a permitted use at the clubhouse building to also include language for an indoor cigar bar in that building. So at this time, if you agree with that change in the amendment, make sure to forward a positive recommendation to the Township Board for approval of the PUD amendment. And then the applicant is here as well. I don't know if they have anything else to add, or
Any comments from anybody?
Pretty straightforward.
Not here.
Wasn't here on the June 19th meeting, so I have done. So would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion in Case Number 233765, that we make a recommendation to the Township Board for a PUD ordinance amendment allowing for cigar bar use as permitted, as a permitted use at the clubhouse building.
Motion made by Member Engel, supported by Member Roland?
No, I was just gonna say, can we do, should we say an indoor cigar bar? Doesn't, does it need to be said?
No. Well, it's
It does say in the recommendation
Okay.
Indoor cigar bar.
Then I'm okay with that.
Let me amend that to an indoor cigar bar, then, that's fine, because that's what the staff recommendation was. Let me amend that to an indoor cigar bar, then, that's fine, because that's what the staff recommendation was.
Okay, so I heard a motion from Member Ringo.
I'll support it.
Support from Member Flynn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed.
I knew something interesting was gonna happen.
Okay, let's move on to article eleven, review proposal from McKenna to assist with the master plan update.
Oh, there's one, like, can we take a half a step back? I mean, I would love to prove it. Say I have a question for Brian. That.
Uh. Sure.
Okay. Brian, I remember something in there that they had. There was something that there was supposed to be some lots combined or something like that, okay, is that in there that they have to do that before?
Correct, before doing that building addition where this was located, and so they still got to do all that.
All right, it just popped in my head when I was reading this stuff, so I just wanted to be sure.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. So. That's just. We have a, uh, proposal from McKenna to assist with the master plan update, we've been talking about this for a while. Uh, we have, uh, support, uh, from the supervisor, uh, and, uh, I would say broad support from, um. The, the trustees, uh, to the point that I think at the last meeting that I was at, I was threatened by one trustee, uh, to get it quote unquote right. Uh, Brian, if you want to give kind of an overview, the, the intention here is, um. And is to open up the master plan, a few things, you know, we, we want to look at density of some of the residential. Make sure that the master plan is aligning with the strategic plan, McKenna is the group that did, uh, the strategic plan with us, so they. Tend to be appropriate, and we solicited multiple, Brian solicited multiple bids, so I'm not trying to steal your thunder here, Brian, but, uh. You and I have been talking about this for a while.
Yeah, that's the biggest part of it, is again, township leadership have mentioned for a while that they want to make sure the master plan is kind of in line with some of the new goals. From the strategic plan, so that was really the main focus is, uh, McKenna will help with a review of the master plan. Um, and provide then kind of recommendations for their items that need to be amended to, uh, meta-reflect the goals that came out of all the work and public input that went through the strategic plan. And since, um, if we were doing a full rewrite of the master plan, I think we'd go and, um, look for some more dif- different groups and things like that, but since McKenna is the one that assisted with strategic plan, they make the most sense to help with this project then. So in their scope of work, they mentioned there that they'll, um, kind of a few major tasks of reviewing the master plan there. Um. Just to see how that reflects on evolving goals and priorities and make sure that's still accurate. The work on some of the, looking again at the future land use map, and they've been doing a bit of this work with the D D A as well, focused on the village area. Um, they'll expand that. Um, they'll take a look to look at, you know, zoning, see if there's things that need to be changed to, uh, attain some of those goals from the strategic plan. Um, I mentioned that we want to hold a, you know, public open house as well, just to make sure we're being transparent about what is going on. Um, and then. See, I think those are kind of the main. Items there, and is part of the zoning review too, talking about specific density maximums, if there's areas that we want to allow for increased density, if that helps with some of our village plan, that'll be a main focus of it as well. So they've worked out a, uh, number of meetings with staff, with the planning commission, a couple with the board as well, as part of that scope of work.
Any questions? I'd like to move, or I'd like. Would, would like to see tonight is that we make a motion to, uh, adopt this, and I don't think we need board approval on this, it's on.
Since we budgeted for it and it's under twenty-five thousand, um, we don't, and then I'll have supervisor less prints over the interim manager sign off on it.
Yeah, but it's, and, and we don't need a formal, it's more, Brian and I thought it would be good to have y'all. Review it and, uh. Go back, you have a question, Member Rissy?
I, I do, I was just curious, and I, I guess I'll, I'll start by leading and saying that I'm glad to see. McKenna as the option because they did the strategic plan, and I think they're two kind of go hand in hand. And there's certainly some confusion right now with the wording in the strategic plan versus the future land use map and other, you know.
Yep.
You know where I'm going. My question is. Were there other companies that submitted bids to do this, or was McKenna the only one?
Right, so we didn't put out an R F P on it, asked McKenna to provide a proposal since they're the one that made the most sense, since they are the ones most knowledgeable about the strategic plan and. Could most efficiently do that review to bring the two.
We talked to others, though, we, we, you know, Grace had mentioned one. Uh, and again, once it all came back, uh, she's, she, her recommendation was to. Work with the one that did the strategic.
Right, it was, yeah.
But we, we did talk to others, for sure.
Okay, we didn't have any formally, right, applications or from anything else, but.
And is the dollar amount here consistent with what was budgeted for this project, or?
Yeah, it's much lower than all this budgeted, actually, we budgeted twenty-five thousand, just to make sure we covered.
I, I got confused, I thought twenty-five thousand was the, the trigger for approval, not the, the budgeted.
It, it happens to be both, yeah.
All right, that's why I was confused.
On an hourly basis with the eleven-five as, as a maximum?
So no, it will do eleven-five, and then the meetings are in addition to that, so it'll be, it'll be slightly over that, it won't be by a lot, so they, they do, um, outline that in the scope of work.
Okay.
So attendance at a meeting is billed hourly, and it's similar to the agreements they currently have with the work they're doing with the D D A.
This, this looks good, I could, I can, uh.
We've worked with Danielle pretty extensively in the strategic plan, and I, I really was impressed by her. And did you have any interaction with her?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Do you want a recommendation or anything on this, a formal motion, or?
Yeah, like, I wish to make a recommendation to, to. Actually, I would like a motion to, to instruct Brian to hire, right, let's do it.
Let's do it, I'll make a motion to, uh, to move forward, uh, with McKenna to. I would say finish what they started with the strategic plan.
I'll support it.
I heard, I, I heard it from, uh, Trustee Norhuck first, so Member Rissy makes a motion, uh, to instruct Brian to, to hire McKenna, and it was supported by Trustee Norhuck, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Hearing none opposed, we'll move forward, thank you for that.
Just as one note, um, I'll start that master plan process, again, the first step is sending out just notices of intent to plans, I'll send that, those out this week, so we've already checked that box and we're.
And also hold any applications that specifically relate to density as residential?
Sure.
Okay, uh, let's move forward to. The big topic of the night, article twelve, update from the A C District Zoning Review Subcommittee. Does Scott get to walk down to the podium?
No, I'm not, I'm not speaking.
Thought you hit a power.
I got nothing to say. I got nothing to say. I got nothing to say.
I thought that, uh, I, I want to commend. This group.
Maybe I am supposed to say those, since the planning director is M I A.
The planning director's here, and he's just not participating in our meeting, um.
Okay, well, I'll, uh, I'll start off then by saying, the last time you guys looked at this, the A C committee was working. And, uh, looking at a much broader area. And we refocused our energy on the airport property, if you will, airport proper, I guess you could say. And so really, that's, uh, the key change from the last update. But the, the other thing that's new and interesting here is you'll notice in your packet, there was a red box labeled overlay C, and that was, uh, uh, what we came up with after, um. Well, in part with some, um, a joint meeting with, uh, township staff, uh, supervisor and, uh, township legal counsel, we all agreed that, uh. This overlay C was a, was a good idea because it's, it's surrounded by the runways. Nobody's really going to be, um, able to see much of what's going on there unless they drive into the airport, the airport seems to be doing a decent job with. Laying things out and in that area, and the. Reality is. We don't have any regulation on aeronautical uses, and predominantly what happens inside that box is aeronautical. So to give them a little bit more flexibility in there, they'll still have to follow our stormwater standards. In that, in that box, but they will be able to kind of self-plan, self, self-plan themselves in that. In that box, they won't come in front of the planning commission, they won't submit a site plan review necessarily, which is essentially what they've been doing for the last twenty years. So we're really not changing much there, we're just asking for, for some stormwater regulations to be followed. Uh, did I get that right, Brian, or am I missing any key items for overlay C?
No, that's really the big thing, and I mean, really what we're doing is, right now we have subzones one and two, subzone one is the large green area, subzone two is the thin areas along Patterson and Thornapple River, so. In subzone one, we don't require any site plan review, so we're really, we're shrinking that area tremendously into overlay C. That area is still there, but much smaller, but areas that we don't require site plan review, and the areas that we do require site plan review are now much larger.
Right.
Comprehensive.
So the area along Patterson is no longer subzone two, um, it's just general. Airport area, and then we added this overlay A on the east side, which is a little bit more, um, restrictive, trying to drive airport growth to the west. And to the south, not as much to the east. So.
Normally C, I think it's twenty-five percent of this city of Grand Rapids anyway, so.
Correct, which we don't have any regulation on anyhow.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
I liked how you used the, uh, runway and effectively craft as your. Line of D mark age.
Well, there was discussion that runways can move. But, uh, but we, we figured it was a safe bet to draw the box right there, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's where we're at.
Yeah. Hmm. What are you looking for from us?
Brian, what are you looking for? So, so I have a quick question, like, you've got A, B, and C, and then you've got the rest of the screen area, I mean, is that? Is that, is that a D? I mean, what, you haven't defined the, the area that's not in those overlays.
So that's just the A C zoning district, so that really is the zoning district now.
Okay.
So that is defined, um, at the beginning of the chapter, like fourteen or thirteen, so we list a number of permitted uses. For it, and then A C, the, the overlays are kind of additional restrictions on top of that, then. So for example, so overlay A is much more restrictive in uses permitted than the general A C district. Um. Overlay B differs in that, it, it's, overlay B is essentially still just the underlying zoning, but it allows aeronautical use, so kind of encouragement to. Have more development that side on the west side of the airport. And then again, overlay C doesn't require site plan reviews, since it's in the very center of the. Airport, have minimal effect on the township, so the, the area not in overlays is the new just A C zoning district.
So here's my, go ahead, Scott. No, you go right ahead. So here's my concern is, uh, I can't imagine any Cascade resident wants to see a five-story hotel on the corner of. Uh, Patterson and Forty-fourth Street.
I think they would still have to come in front of us under the new. Yeah, that.
Under this, that's in front of us.
Yeah, under the old and new, they'd.
Currently, it's. But are they, are they, I mean, with it being the arc. Zoning, I mean, are they able to?
Well, it's not the arc zoning on that side.
Forty-fourth?
Patterson.
Patterson is not arc. Well, I'm saying, you know, like the entrance for the, uh.
Current entrance to there.
Yeah, current entrance to the airport, yeah. That is not arc, and a large portion of that is shaded. I believe. A C two.
Currently, yeah.
Is all of it, or just some of it?
Um, most of that area of the intersection.
Right, but if the hotel borders any. A C one.
It'd be the more restrictive of the two.
Which would be A C two, so, right, so they would, they would be coming to us under the current zoning.
Correct. And again, most of the conversations of concern with development, things like that, were focused on the east side along Thornapple River Drive, they haven't been as, as much on, on Patterson.
If I could challenge that for a second, Alan, only, because I, are you sure, like, I, I don't think most residents would care.
I don't either.
They don't either, like, is they're just driving into the airport, like, it's, it's a common thing to perhaps have a hotel there, I.
So here's my thing.
Yeah.
I don't really think we need another hotel, I think we have plenty, right, I mean, we've got, we do. We, we don't, and we've got some that we're having problems with, right, and so, I, 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 I mean, I, I just.
That's fine, but if the zoning ordinance allows for those types of things, and you think we have too many, and then you need to change your ordinance to prevent that, you know, it's like car washes.
That's what I'm saying, that's why I'm asking the question, like, do we, if we, if we think. Or if I think there's too many, I mean, is the, is the A C sub one and eight, uh. Is that? More restrictive so they can't put a hotel right there?
Well, if we're gonna change the ordinance, I'd like to eliminate all the hotels. You know, not just that corner.
You know, have to have a place for it somewhere.
So. My, I'm gonna step, I, I.
We regroup.
Want to ask you.
Yeah.
What it, what do you want us to do with this tonight?
I think really the, the subcommittee is looking for kind of feedback like that, if there's any. Major changes, minor changes, if there's any revisions that are necessary, um, because they haven't brought this to the group in a while.
So I, I want to. If I could.
Hmm.
Get a quick straw poll. Uh, who has a concern with a hotel there?
There or anywhere?
I'll say anywhere in the A C, in, in, in the hotel, and, and, and in the airport area. So we have two. Out of six, so there's the feedback, is that, is that okay with me, Alan, like, I'm not trying to. Um, I, I hear you, but I don't know that the. It would be interesting to ask when Bruno and Richardson are back.
Yes, because I would have, I would think that they would be in line with. Trustee Norhuck and I.
Yeah.
And so that would be four to four.
It would be, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so it would. Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, now, I, I would just want to clarify here, make sure I'm on the right page, because it's been a while since we had a discussion about this, so. Based on the feedback you hear tonight. You would, uh. Draft or go along with a, a final version of this, which would come back to the planning commission?
Correct.
There would be a public hearing or no public hearing?
Yep, uh, public hearings required at the plane.
And then if the planning commission approved that draft. Then it would go to the township board for their approval.
Correct.
Is there a public hearing in township board side?
There's not one required, no.
Okay, they may choose to, and they may not.
They, they did it the last one, so I suspect they, they would.
They probably gauge if there's a lot of people.
Comes back to us, maybe that's how we deal with this hotel thing.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, that's why I'm asking these questions.
When it gets to the total planning commission and those two members. In theory would be here, are you comfortable with something like that, Alan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with some language on that kind of stuff, my, my concern that I, I guess I would voice to you and anyone else listening to it, yes, um. At the, you know. At the corner of Forty-fourth and Patterson, if they built a hotel, I personally am not, uh. Um. I agree, we, we seem to be having a problem with hotels, but I don't know that I am, uh, that passionate about one of that spot, now, if they wanted to build one at Thirty-Sixth Street Craft, or at, uh. Uh, if you would, at, uh, Forty-Eighth Thoroughbred Drive. I would be much more passionate about that, so.
Well, and if they want.
I'm just, you know, so it's. For me, it would depend on where it is. Absolutely, and if, and if they want to build one on Patterson and Fifty-second, I'm okay with that, I mean, you can put it further down, right, that's, that's fine, I just, I just think right there, like, it's. It's, it's an airport, it's not pretty, right, but I think you're driving to and from the airport, it's open, it's, it's. Cascade, right, you put a big, and it's not gonna be a one or two-story, it's going to be an eight-story monstrosity. That is going to create a heck of a lot more traffic at that intersection, which is already a problem.
It, it can't be that tall, because ours owning ordinance, uh, limits them to, what is it? Forty?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet. So it can't be taller than, like, for instance, the Drury Hotel had to get an exception to go as high as they did.
Hmm.
We found four stories.
So we wouldn't give it, so we wouldn't give them a sec, uh, uh, exception, like we did with the Drury.
I, that was in the expressway service area, which I think allowed for.
Right, that specific zoning laws for higher.
This one, this one is captive.
We got a nice sign on that, too.
We did.
Yeah.
Sign. Sorry. I don't know if you can see, there's a lot of weeds there.
Yes.
They'll say Cascade Township.
Okay.
We got a sign out of it.
Joe, you had a comment.
Right before you leave.
Okay.
Just a couple, first of all, I, I don't want to project current hotel issues onto a future, future responsible hotel operator for the airport. We are projecting growth for the airport, we are trying to make sure that this growth occurs on the east side, not the west side. So if we start limiting what we do.
West side, not the east side.
Encourage it on the west side, not the east side, so if we start limiting, at this point, what people can do over on the east side, it seems to fly in the face of our. Women on the west side, seems to fly in the face of what we're trying to do here, so.
That's absolutely right.
I, I'm, I'm, I can't support that, I, I respect the. The perspective of, uh. Alan, but I think. We have to leave that open.
And that, that's part of the reason the committee presented this plan, is because we're. But, again, I said this earlier, and just as Joe. Mentioned, our goal is for the growth to occur. South and west, not north and east.
And I'm okay with it growing south of Forty-fourth.
They're going to build a hotel, we have to have a place for them to do that. Or we, I shouldn't say we have to. Why do we? Should be a place for them.
Why do we have to allow them to build a hotel, is there no hotels within a two-mile radius? I, I'm just saying, like, there's six hotels within a two-mile radius, more than that.
This is good conversation, the intent was to, to give feedback, we, we've effectively done that, we have an opportunity to address this when it comes back. And I, I hope that we have a fuller body uh, to, to adequately. Debate that, I think there are valid points on both sides of this, and um. Now, I, I think we, we, we move forward, I think the, the subcommittee has what they need. Um, okay. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, is there anything else that? The commission would want the subcommittee to do between now and the next meeting, or are we, are we good with Evan, Brian?
I mean, I, yeah, Timmy, Alan and I, like, do we, I, I looked at it, I spent time, but I, but I've also been in some of your meetings, so, you know, I, I'm supportive of what you've done. You know, Alan or Timmy, sorry, before, before you go, Scott, like, do you have any feedback for these guys that?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, besides the hotels, Alan, anything?
Okay. Then I, I would like a motion to formally end the subcommittee.
Well, then, bring us a recommendation, bring, bring it, write it up, so we can know that.
Well, I think this is the draft right here, right, Brian?
Brian, let's, let, let's, let's get it.
Yep. Yeah, so yeah, we can go ahead and schedule that, um. I talked to you about whether we want to have one last kind of just custom base with the airport on it, and so we'll figure that out, that'd be the only other thing.
Let me address this so they understand, like, I, I'm trying to play, we are trying to play nice with the airport. We, we moved past the PFOS thing, they, they paid us money. And um, play nice might be the wrong word, but we're trying to be partners on, on some of this stuff so that we're not surprised by things. Uh, I'm a big proponent to, to giving them context, being transparent with the goal of getting the same back from them. This isn't to suggest that uh. That we, we change what we're doing or how we do things, I just want to have an open dialogue with them that has been absent for frickin' three years because of the legal stuff. And so what Brian and I talked about was not. Just giving them a heads up of where this is going, and then. Bringing it forward, and, and we uh, have dialogue, and I just want them to have the opportunity to know what's coming, so if they want to be here and address us. They can give us their perspective, because I want the same courtesy should they decide to do something. That, that we would get that level of notice, and then could show up to their meeting and say, hey, we don't agree with this.
And they did come to our subcommittee meetings.
Yeah, I.
Two of them, and gave us input.
I have found uh, Brian's counterpart Casey to be. Um, a uh, you know. An honest actor, uh. He's a planner, he's not the, you know what I mean, he's not, he's not the group that was playing games on the legal side, and so. Um, I just, I'd like to, to maintain transparency with, with him, and. Hopefully they give that to us, so what, what Brian and I talked about was just giving them. An update on what we're up to, and then. When it come, that, that way they know exactly what's coming, and uh. They can address us like any other citizen or, you know. Uh, any other bodies, that they're, they're definitely affected by this, and. We don't have to take whatever guidance that they give us.
And I think Casey has been very forthright about the things that they don't agree with, with what we've included. And he was just right up front.
Right, they, they did not jump up and down about this, or.
No, and, yeah, they, they tried to send some, some thesis legal interpretations, and we fired back, right, so this isn't to say that. I'm suggesting that we lay down, in fact, I think Brian can attest that I, I've suggested we do the opposite, and we fire back hard, and we have done that, and I just. But I do want to have some transparency with them, where we say, hey, this is what we're up to. It, you know, in advance so that they can come in as a, a concerned body and make any comments, does anybody have any concerns with that approach?
No, no. Not, not yet, no, no, I don't, no.
You good with it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. We'll get this, it'll probably be August.
Yep.
Uh, we were debating, I, I don't think we have a whole lot for the next meeting, so the thought was, it's a week away, has anything popped up since you and I talked?
We haven't had, we don't have any applications or new business since the meeting would be one week from today, since this one got pushed back, but.
We've got member Richardson who's already gone, uh, so the thought was to, to pump this to August. Um. We do need to form the farmland preservation, we, we've been doing a lot of research on that, and it's uh. Time that we, 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 we take that on, um, we're kind of in the second half of our year, so to speak, so. Um. You know, I'd like, if, if somebody here is willing to. Share that.
It's okay. Was already told I was cheering at a previous meeting.
I, I only ask. Context, uh, member Rissy to do it because he had experience with it all with his property, right, so he's been on the.
Yeah, I did.
He's been on the other side of this, that, that's not to say that he has to, but I'd, I'd like to. To vote to, to form this committee, uh, with him as chair, and. Have him approach a few of you, if any of you are interested to approach him, like, I know member Richardson would be interested in this, and I want to make sure we report him.
Well, why don't we do that at the, at the fall? One, we don't have a full.
Well, if, if we can.
I shouldn't say fall, when all eight of us are here.
Right, well, I'd like to form it now with you as its chair, and the potential members approach you, and you can solicit them and come forward with.
That's fine.
That's. Member, what were you gonna say?
I just, would this be under Article thirteen old business then?
Yeah.
Have you done with Article twelve?
Yeah, we, yeah, we told them.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
On Article twelve? Uh. I've mentioned this to uh, Scott and Chris and Brian, that. I'd be willing to volunteer to put together notebooks at the right time. For the board members. To review, and we should. Try to get those to them at least a week in advance of any proposal. We make or hearing we have regarding this issue. Uh, so that you folks can read it, see the meeting minutes that we've had, uh, see both the marked up. Uh, chapter fourteen and the final four, chapter fourteen, uh, to see the comparisons between those. Um, I'd be happy to volunteer to do that.
I think that would be fantastic, anybody have any objections to that, and I think.
Not at all.
Thank you.
Can only be helpful to have more information.
I looked at this too, it's, it's, if you get a chance, Ralph will pass it around, uh, it, it's pretty solid in terms of how it's organized and understandable, so.
I would have expected nothing less.
I know.
Is there a map in there?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Good, good.
Alright, um, so we're, we're in Article thirteen old business, the, can I, can I get a motion to, to form the uh, farmland. Preservation Subcommittee?
Not for me.
Rissy is its chair, from somebody other than me or.
Make a motion to form the uh. Farmland Preservation Committee with um. Member Rissy as the chair, support.
Alright, member uh, Angle made a motion uh, and supported by member Moxley, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Hearing none opposed, um. Motion is uh, carried, so. Solicit some members between now and then, and bring your roster back, and then you can, you know, announce your meetings, minutes, all that, but I know member Richardson would be interested.
And my, um, okay, yeah.
And if anybody else is interested, talk to Scott, you've had some experience with this too, I feel like you could be a.
Knee deep.
Yeah, you are, you are.
Knee deep in this world right now, so many ACs that, I guess I can excuse.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I'll short talk later.
Alright. Uh, I have difficult soliciting members, if some of them are still on other subcommittees, that could be, could be done.
That, that subcommittee's disbanded, we don't have another subcommittee that, what, what else do we have?
Okay.
Did we, was there a motion to disband the AC District?
We'll do that after we, we, uh, it comes forward, unless we, I, I want to give, I, I want there to be an opportunity, guys, to send it back to you.
Okay.
If it's.
Alright.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know you want to disband it, uh, absolutely, you have done uh, some amazing.
How many pages of minutes are we there? Ralph talks too much.
You are uh, that's evident by the last meeting, uh.
Our first meeting, our first meeting was last August.
I know.
Almost a year.
I know, yes, I know. We'll blame Wendy, because she's not here anymore, right?
There you go.
Or Ben, we'll blame Ben.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that the, that due nineteenth meeting forever be known as the marathon meeting, uh, when referred to now.
That wasn't the longest.
It was reminiscent, reminiscent, reminiscent of uh, other days.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
He's part of the association.
With that, I'd make a.
Any other business, and then we've got to acknowledge there's.
Do we, uh, any news on a new member, uh, to replace?